Six twenty, uh, six thirty right now. Your life? Okay. Welcome. Uh, to the, uh, let's see, December eighth, twenty twenty five, painful time to zoning commission meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Tagalushak?
Here.
Mark Ruth?
Here.
John Hart?
Here.
Daryl Webster?
Here.
John Everett?
Here.
Okay. We got that done. General commentary, uh, did you have received anything?
No, I have not.
Sean? Okay, since we have, we see nothing and staff is in the audience. I want you to have anything comment to say to us?
No.
No, I ain't kidding you. Okay, I'll call a regular meeting to order. Uh, before we go any further, as you can see on your agenda, there's a handwritten section number written in. It was thirty nine oh nine that was given to us. The agenda was sent out to the public, public notes and all that good stuff. And it really is supposed to be thirty two oh nine. So I'd like to, I need to, I need to entertain a motion for us to amend the agenda so that for case thirty seven, three twenty seven Z C is for thirty two point oh nine instead of thirty two, thirty nine oh nine. A motion by Mark, seconded by John, to amend the, uh, uh, agenda. Thirty nine point oh nine to thirty two point oh nine? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Hey, Mark Ruth?
Yes.
Daryl Webster?
Yes.
Tagalushak?
Yes.
John Hart?
Yes.
And John Everett?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the agenda is now amended. Uh, we had admitted for the July fourteenth, twenty twenty five meeting, the last time we met. Um, it was emailed to all of us. Any discussion or any changes need to be made to those minutes that were emailed to us? No amendments here. Uh, entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Daryl. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Tagalushak?
Yes.
Mark Ruth?
Yes.
John Everett?
Yes.
John Hart?
Yes.
And Daryl Webster?
Yes.
Okay, we have no public hearings. Number five's gone. We have no site plans to review, that's gone. New business. New business is we have seven different sections of the zoning code. Each text amendment, proposed text amendment is a separate case. Uh, starting at, uh, thirty two, three twenty seven to thirty two point oh nine. We'll go to each one of them individually. Uh, so we'll start with case twenty five, two oh twenty five, three twenty seven Z Z, Z C, section thirty two oh nine. Um, uh, is, everyone has a copy of that proposal, is in yellow. Uh, Sean, please explain to us what, reason, A, reason why for it and what are we changing and why?
So ultimately, we're adding section C, and that is a minimum rear yard setback for the main dwelling shall be twenty, twenty-two and a half feet, except where the minimum buffer of thirty-five feet shall apply to the side to back building orientation. Ultimately, uh, in F P U D, we do not have, um, anything really clear cut of what a setback should be, uh, for something that's not backed up to anything. Uh, so if a little bit further up, you would see where it says, no building or structure shall be erected or located within ten feet of the required buffer area. Um, so that is the current setback without anything in any area. So we needed to add a setback. Twenty-two and a half, that's seems like an odd number, but twenty-two and a half plus twenty-two and a half is forty-five, which is what is required if you're back to back on houses. So if you have a home on one street and the other, and they're facing, they need to be forty-five apart. So we figured it makes sense, just in case.
Okay. All right, that sounds reasonable. Any questions on the, from the commission to the staff on the explanation of why?
I have one question, the part that you quoted up there was thirty feet.
In terms of the thirty-five feet? So the minimum rear setback on the main dwelling shall be twenty-two and a half feet, except where the minimum buffer is thirty-five for the side to back orientation. So that is on a corner lot, like around a cul-de-sac type situation, like where, you know, like the street stops and there's the one in, and then you have this home here, so we don't want that home closer, that's why in the zoning code already, it's...
So we're adding a section C?
We're adding section C to that.
The twenty-two and a half was half of forty-five.
Half of the forty-five, yep.
Oh, I see, okay. Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Sorry, John. Any other questions of the commission? Members to Sean or the staff? Okay. We, uh, we have, uh, the decision of the commission is either A, continue this discussion on this text amendment, or B, enter, enter, or, or entertain a motion to continue, or entertain a motion to set a public hearing for the next meeting on this text amendment.
I would think a motion to, option B, I, I do not hear anything that would be of consequence or reason to postpone.
So you want to set the, the text amendment for the public?
I, I did not hear anything that would give me pause, so.
No. Okay. I got a motion on the floor to set, uh, case on thirty-two oh nine to a public hearing for next meeting. Uh, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
One second. Okay, I have a motion for setting a public hearing. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Tagalushak?
Yes.
Mark Ruth?
Yes.
John Hart?
Yes.
Daryl Webster?
Yes.
And John Everett?
Yes.
Okay. Case thirty, three twenty-eight Z C, section thirty-two oh four G as in, how about that? Hang on, uh, it's a single piece of paper. It's under walkways. Sean?
Same, same section, ultimately just different number, right? Um, this is about walkways, so the, the trustees, uh, in ninety-nine point nine percent of any F P U D, uh, have asked the developers to place five-foot walkways in there. Um, and that's great unless they don't come to us and they have to go to the sub, um, like they can go to the Lake County Planning Department for subdivision review, and ultimately their requirements is not five, so they can do four. But if, if it's in F P U D, the trustees would like to see a five-foot, so ultimately changing our code to meet five feet is what is desired.
Okay.
And that's because of internal walkways. Once you're in four feet, you know, there's so many people, we don't want people on the streets, and we see that a lot with kids and stuff, just because there's so much traffic and flowing. Ultimately pushing it to five feet. And the newer developments coming in, subdivisions, we know that they're like, okay, well, we don't need to meet it, but then when they meet with the trustees, they're like, okay, we'll put in five for you.
All right, so this is really coming driving from the trustees?
This one, yes.
Okay. Daryl?
Just remember, the subdivision regulations is a minimum. They can be greater than that.
Mm-hmm.
So by you going with the five-foot, that proceeds, supersedes the four-foot in the subregs. That's the way that they would look at it. That's being director for so many years, uh, and processing subdivisions, that's the way I would look at it.
Yep.
We trust you, Daryl.
Huh?
We trust you for sure.
I'm just bringing it out.
Any others, questions for Sean on this amendment, text amendment, proposed text amendment?
I have a comment, though. I'm thinking about the five-foot, and I think that's good. But, uh, a lot of the condos where they do have sidewalk and they're across driveways. Did you ever look at, see what the length of a driveway is supposed to be, or, uh, does that sidewalk count as part of the driveway?
So in terms of that would be a part of the driveway in nature, so just because it's kind of cut across it. Um, but for like the condos and stuff, most of the F P U D, so let's say Greyhawk is, um, it's, that's our four, so it's more of a different type, so the, the setting there is different. We'll, we'll use casement because there's going to be townhomes in there, but that's going to be a private road, so that changes that aspect of it too. Um, but in the width of it, it's still, that sidewalk is just going to shift the driveway distance and setback for the building is going to ultimately stay the same.
That's what it is, well, maybe the fact that you might want to look at what we require driveway because a lot of people, if you put two-car driveway,
Yeah.
it's across the sidewalk. So, uh, and I've, I've seen quite a few of these P U Ds now where they squeeze a lot and they get in there and and then, uh, Paints City has one that, that is ridiculous, and you can't get two cars, you have to wait. Or you gotta get three cars wide, but there.
Yeah.
People coming from director, not like, and, and some parts of that, uh, if people park two cars, the driveway blocked the sidewalk.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I mean, typically what happens is we get a call for a permit for a fence, and then we get a call from the homeowner asking, do we need a permit to widen our driveway? Because that's how it is. Ryan Holmes puts the minimum in for sure.
Five foot is good.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing, hearing none. Okay. Entertained a motion to, we're setting a public hearing for case twenty twenty-five, three, two, eight, sec, on, for sec, on section thirty-two point oh four G.
So moved.
Daryl made a motion for setting a public hearing for next meeting.
Second.
Second, Mark? Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mark Ruth?
Yes.
John Everett?
Yes.
Daryl Webster?
Yes.
Tagalushak?
Yes.
And John Hart?
Yes.
Okay. Case three twenty-nine on sex, for section five.
Definition.
Is adding a fee simple lot for section five? Uh, Sean?
Staff?
So we do not have a definition for fee simple lot, and that, uh, is used a lot throughout our zoning text, so we just wanted to define what a fee simple lot was. So simply adding the text into our definition section is the easiest route to do that.
That's pretty simple definition, I think it's fine.
We never had one?
Uh, so my legal eagle, uh, that is in the zoning department, brought it to my attention that we didn't have it, and it definitely calls for it when people want to argue on what is what for a lot.
Okay. Okay. Sounds reasonable. Discussion on the text amendment? Any questions to the staff? Okay. Hearing none. Entertained a motion for setting a public hearing for case three twenty-nine for section five of zoning code.
Slow motion.
John made a motion?
Second. John.
And John seconded. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
John Hart?
Yes.
Daryl Webster?
Yes.
John Everett?
Yes.
Tagalushak?
Yes.
And Mark Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, case three thirties. Section, uh, for text amendment proposed for eight oh three A and eight oh four A. So Sean, please, uh, hand us why and what was the purpose of this change?
So ultimately, removing the verbiage of notice of such hearing shall be given to the township zoning commission by one publication in one or more newspapers in general circulation. Um, O R C has recently changed, AKA back in April, uh, I thought some other jurisdictions would update their zoning text, and nobody has, so I will be the guinea pig, and I've updated our zoning text to remove it. Ultimately, um, there's a lot of work. Sending to the newspaper and publishing a certain number of days out, obviously still there's the ten-day window, but we have the freedom of posting it immediately for a ten-day window, and then setting our timeframe versus on the timeframe of, oh, the newspaper needs to be in by this day, by this time, by this many, you know, windows of opportunity, right? Um, so the O R C voted and changed to where we can use our social media sites, AKA post it on our website, and our Facebook page. Or if we still wanted to be old school, we could use the newspaper and/or other official capacities.
Newspaper anymore?
Right.
So basically, it, it updated the, to the twentieth, twenty-first century.
Correct, and that's for sections eight point oh three A and for further down in eight oh four. It's literally copy and paste because the trustees, once you, like, this would be the prime example, so this will be the last time the text change will have to go into the newspaper, because then after that, it could be digital. So.
And this really what it is, it, it, it gives flexibility to the staff of getting it in, plus the fact that we can do it much quicker this way. And, okay, so all future ones, so you still have to go the old way until we, this is path by the trustees, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it's still a little bit of hurdles, but not that much more. Um, any discussion on the motion? I mean, a discussion on the, uh, text amendment proposed. Hearing none. Entertained a motion for setting a public hearing for case three twenty, three thirty on section eight oh point oh three A and eight point oh four A.
Second.
Okay, John Hart made the motion and Daryl seconded. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Daryl Webster?
Yes.
Tagalushak?
Yes.
John Hart?
Yes.
Mark Ruth?
Yes.
And John Everett?
Yes.
Okay. Next one. Make sure I got it right now. Uh, okay. Motion, I mean, the text amendment proposal is for section twelve point oh five I. This is case three thirty-one. Uh, it's, it's, uh, Sean, what's the purpose of this one change?
So ultimately, car washes have, uh, been zoned out of, uh, the B two and B three district. The verbiage never was ultimately changed. But it's still okay with gas stations, so that's why adding in the text, you know, conditionally permitted in conjunction with gas stations only. So let's just play a hypothetical game, a sheet's wanted to go in next to the, the storage place, right? But they're like, hey, the only way we're going to be able to go in here is when we have our car wash. Well, that's great because it's conditionally used when you open a gas station anyways, right? So giant eagle, you know, hey, if they didn't have it, they want to expand it, they have the gas station, it would be in conjunction with that. Uh, the trustees, uh, wanted to not have single car washes anymore on Manor Avenue just because it was car wash storage, storage car wash, vape shop, car wash, vape shop, car wash. So, right, so ultimately, in terms of zoning, it's not good for the design of Manor Avenue and our comprehensive plan, so that's why changing the verbiage of adding in only with conjunction of gas stations is there.
Is this, uh, this one driven by the trustees? Or driven by trustees and staff?
Correct. Second one. Both.
Okay. I understand it. Uh, any discussion on the proposed text amendment? Hearing none. Entertained a motion for case three thirty-one for section twelve point oh five I. So set the public, for a public hearing in the next meeting.
A motion, second.
Okay, John Everett made the motion and Mark seconded it. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
John Everett?
Yes.
Daryl Webster?
Yes.
Mark Ruth?
Yes.
John Hart?
Yes.
Tagalushak?
Yes.
Okay, case three thirty-two. Uh, for proposed text amendment for section thirty-one oh three B, one B. And it is exactly, uh, if you look at it, it's a one word. So explain to us why this or have a B in it.
It's going to be the law, this is going to be the hardest case of the night. Uh, so when you, when you read it, and for what it is, it's hard to explain to the person when they're trying to place chickens in their yard. And you're like, you can't be there, but it said, but it says any closer to the right of way versus or. So ultimately, it describes the box and the layout of the property. Prohibited in front yards or side yards, or any closer to that right of way. So it, it ultimately keeps that puzzle piece behind the block of the home versus it didn't say anything there. I believe it said, what? Any, or side yards, any closer to the right of way. So it, the or is needed, also my legal eagle, uh, found this one too.
You're adding or to it, then?
We're adding or to it. There's nothing removed, just adding or to it.
So why do you think this one, or is needed?
Amanda?
Because when I was reading it without the or, it didn't make sense. And I, so, yeah, shall be prohibited in front yards or side yards, any closer to the road right of way because of... Or any closer to the road right of way, because why would side yards be any closer to the road right of way?
Okay. Thank you.
Good logic.
I appreciate it. Um, any, any other discussion or questions for the staff on this proposed text amendment? Hearing none. Entertained a motion for setting a public hearing for case three thirty-two.
Second.
Mark and Daryl. Mark made the motion and Daryl seconded it. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
John Hart?
Yes.
Mark Ruth?
Yes.
Daryl Webster?
Yes.
John Everett?
Yes.
Tagalushak?
Yes.
Okay, case three thirty-three. A proposed text amendment for section twenty-nine point oh six. Looks like what we're doing in changing from one oh seven, one oh eight, one oh nine to one seventeen, one eighteen, one nineteen. Sean, why?
Numbers are just blatantly wrong currently.
Oh, they're just wrong numbers?
Just wrong numbers. The wrong numbers are just sitting there, so now with the change, it would just literally change them to the right definition.
So bad typo, many years ago. So bad typo, typo, many years ago.
Yeah, just like the agenda, that bad typo on my behalf, not you, that was, that was me, I sent it over to her. So think about it, you know what I mean? It just happens and it just was overlooked, so, but yeah.
Sometimes you don't catch them.
Hey, it's, it's, my legal eagle catches them.
That's good. Okay. Not a, like, any questions? Any additional questions of the staff of, for this proposed amendment? Hearing none. Entertained a motion for setting a public hearing for case three thirty-three through the January meeting.
So moved.
Daryl made the motion?
Second.
Mark made a second. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mark Ruth?
Yes.
John Hart?
Yes.
Tagalushak?
Yes.
John Everett?
Yes.
Daryl Webster?
Yes.
Okay. So January twelfth meeting will have seven public hearings. Be interesting, but shouldn't be bad. Um, do we, anybody have any old business to discuss? Hearing none. Uh, we had no public hearings. Zoning inspectors report?
Uh, nothing really, though, obviously you had mentioned it, uh, next meeting for appointments, and then, um, I'm waiting on the administrator to get us the following year's schedule, so then we can set that. I know it's typically the second Monday of the month, but if there's a holiday, I'd rather just knock it out now, so that everybody's on the same page for communication if there's a holiday.
Well, what we can do there in next meeting in January, give us the proposed schedule, and then we'll have it as, as one of our agenda items, if we have to change it, you know, all the schedule, you can discuss it. And then if we have to make a change, typically it's October for Columbus Day.
That's the major one.
Which is a major one, which we have to maybe make a switch, depending upon what that i- is.
Yeah.
Um, with the Mondays, we'll have to change that ones either before or after. Um, we can do that right away, or we could wait till, but I think we should do it in January rather than wait till, we may not depend on the situation. Um, yeah, we can do that, make it, uh, that an agenda item and go from there.
Any? Have you speak of a change in our, uh, extra board member?
The extra board member actually for, um...
Just as a...
You know, I know Jim's gone, and it's up to the trustees to appoint somebody.
Trustees?
Trustees appoint the commission members.
Yeah. In order, no?
These will appoint somebody for the alternate, or, and then one of us gets reappointed. Who's up for reappointment this year?
I do not know, I'm scared, I haven't had it in forever.
But I'm assuming one of us is going to get a phone call from one of the trustees, or from Holly, or Rachel, to see if they want to re-up for another five years.
Yeah, I can double check and send out an email.
But I think, uh, last time I was re-upped, I think it was somebody called, didn't Josh call me up, I asked him if I wanted to do it again, and I said, I'm crazy enough to say, yes, I did, yes, but, yeah. It'll, 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 somebody will get in contact with one of us five, because it, it's five years, uh, term, and it's five members, so every year, one of the members gets re-upped. And it's up to the trustees to do that, and they'll have to do it at the next meeting. They'll have to do that the next, uh, one of their agenda items in their next meeting. Usually the last meeting of the month, or sometime in the month of December, they re-point whoever is up for the board, various boards, uh, for, because it starts in January, the, the term. All right?
So going back to Jim, though, are, are we in any position to make recommendations to anybody, or propose somebody? Or do you guys have, do you guys have that handle? We obviously have a network, uh, but I don't know what your preference is.
Yeah, the trustees, I believe, have two candidates that they're interested in, so I think they're just hammering out the details on that. They're, they're all aware, I remind them occasionally.
They're usually ahead of the game.
They, they usually have a game plan.
Yeah.
Um, and, and they're pretty up on that, I know that when, yeah.
I, 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 I remember that, because when I first got on this, when I first got on this board, I was asked by one of the trustees back in COVID, what I was interested in doing. And, uh, and I said, yeah, I'll start an idea, anyway. Um, so it's, the trustees handle it, Mark, we are, we are out of it. We, whoever is their alternate, we say, thank you very much, and we, he or she gets on the board and goes from there. Any, any other, for, any other, a little, any other business to come for the commission? Just to make commission aware of, um, before we adjourn, if somebody else has something else in mind. I have one thing. Um, two things, actually. One, everybody have a great Christmas holiday, please, and a new, happy new year, and try to stay warm. I'm supposed to get warmer till about next week, maybe, maybe. Um, number two is that the January meeting, since we're going to have, definitely have a January meeting, we will have election of officers for the following year, for next year, so think about that, how do you want it to handle that? On that, anybody else have any?
Actually, two, my, like, one, I, I made note some time ago about, uh, a lot of places popping up with event centers. Have you looked at that, or do you know of anybody else on, uh, any other building, think, uh, colleges or anybody that, that just have issue?
For event centers?
Yes.
Uh, I know we've had a couple inquiries, uh, for it. Event centers are conditionally used in, I believe, all three B three districts, so... Event centers are conditionally used in, I believe, all three B-three districts, so, um, I, but nobody's pulled the trigger on it in terms of wanting to open one.
Yeah, I, I don't think we've got a major problem, but we did approve a restaurant. At one time, Joel, that's an event center, I know they have trouble getting manpower.
You're talking about Fire and Ice?
The one on, uh, actually Fire and Ice, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, I also, I've heard of other, like in Paints City, someone was planning on opening an event center there, and I didn't thought of our zoning, no question, I think, but, uh, it seemed like they popped up anyplace, well, anyplace and they, uh, have a party or whatever.
Yeah.
And also, I, I think that, uh, if we haven't looked at it before, our trustees have looked at, uh, rentals, short-term rent rentals, uh, keep reading about these shootings and things that, where they get a major thing, and I don't think we have a lot of area for tourists, but we do have some areas that some I, I want to rent them, and so it might be just something to think about.
You talking about that, those Airbnb's?
Yeah, so Airbnb's did come up, it's something that's super hard to track, whether it's, you know, on the two or three main sites, just in nature. Um, it's just something that's, I mean, there's three currently in the township. Um, so even if we put something in place, they'd be grandfathered in, right? Um, but it's not, we, like, right, we don't, it's not like Genie Mountain Lake, where there's such a huge draw for it type situation, but it's definitely on the trustees radar, um, just because it was kind of like, hey, how do we track this? They're kind of more focused on, like, vacant property upkeep versus, like, the short-term rentals. And a lot of the HOAs and, um, the newer developments going in have stricter requirements about what you can and can't do within there, so...
My only other thing that I want to bring up, but somebody showed me a letter here this last couple weeks, and, uh, it was from the township, and it regarded, regarded some zoning, and it was signed by somebody I'd never heard of before, so I don't know, does you have, I haven't been introduced yet to our board or to all of our members there, do they all know you, or do you know that?
I think I've met everybody.
So, this is, this is Miss, Miss Amanda Lewis?
No, I've met.
She's the zoning inspector, my legal eagle, so...
I, I told her that's probably who it was.
Oh, that's probably who it was.
It was a, oh, Z, a car lot, I don't have the twenty, that he had a letter, and I, I don't remember what letter it was about, but he asked me about it.
Oh, where was it?
Well, it was, it was the owner of the car lot, it might have been on another lot.
Ha, it's the daycare.
Um, I, I can't think of the name right now, I don't know.
I can, Danny?
I spoke to him on the phone.
He used to have the junkyard.
Uh, yeah, yeah. It's Danny, it's across the street, it's Mennor, Mennor car connection. It's the, the old Cradle's the Crans that you sent the letter to for there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. See? We all know.
Just to let people know, this is my youngest son, Samuel, Samuel. He's my chauffeur these days.
Anything else? Mark?
I just would like to welcome you guys to join us for a social holiday drink. May be going to El Regal's, and if you guys would like to come, we'd love to have, uh, buy your drink, if you're allowed. Saying might crack the whip on you, I don't know.
Okay. Anything else to come to the board? If not, entertained a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Darryl made it, and I need a second.
Second.
Mark made a second. Discussion, roll call.
Ted Golusik?
He, yes.
John Hott?
Yes.
Darryl Webster?
Yes.
Mark Ruth?
Yes.
John Everett?
Yes.
Seven oh five. Meeting is adjourned.